Minutes for Tuesday, October 16th, 2018. I'd ask for a motion to approve those minutes.
So moved.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing not all those in favor of approving the minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next would be correspondence. Madam Clerk, any correspondence?
Yes, I do have two letters here. The first one being from Shawn Edwards at the Peoria Heights Public Library. This is addressed to Mike Casey. He says, "Mike, I want to thank you and everyone else at the Village of Peoria Heights Public Works for the many hours of assistance to the library. The new bicycle repair station and sign look great. So an added thanks to TJ, Shoop, and Zack for their work on installation. Enclosed is a small token of appreciation from the library. Enjoy."
Thank you, ma'am.
Which was delivered a couple days ago. My second letter here is from Susan G. Coman. And this is relating to the donation from the last movie night, the Star Wars night, for the volunteers who come out, came out and played the characters. It says, "Dear Mayor Phelan, I can't begin to thank you enough for your gift. Your kindness is an investment in the goal of ending breast cancer forever. It is a big goal and stems from a quiet promise between two sisters. Your support means that there are moms in our community who will have to write a, who will not have to write a heartbreaking collection of notes to be opened on birthdays, or have her own promise me conversation with her sister. Your support is cause for celebration. Because of you, celebrations are now possible." And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Okay, as far as announcements, we have a whole lot of activities planned for the upcoming holidays and Christmas season. I'm actually gonna ask Sarah if she would tell everyone a little bit about that?
Sure, just really quick. This Saturday is Small Business Saturday here in the Heights. Well, everywhere, actually. So we're just really encouraging people to shop small and support all of our wonderful local businesses Peoria Heights is really known for. So just remember to shop small on Saturday after all of your Black Friday shopping. December 1st, we have something called It's a Wonderful Heights. And basically, it's really just celebrating all of the businesses we have. Once again, we're gonna have a visit from Santa to numerous shops. Santa will be doing some Christmas shopping, so he'll be spotted at various locations. We'll have Christmas carolers. A lot of the businesses are staying open later and having sales. And then December 8th, we have Chocolate in the Heights. And a lot of our local businesses are doing sales on anything chocolate-related, which can be chocolate candy, chocolate-covered sweaters, anything that's chocolate-colored, really anything. So we do have a Facebook event set up if anyone would like to join it to follow all of our updates. This'll be a really exciting holiday season. So that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Okay, on to trustee reports. The first is Economic and Community Development. Trustee Dan Mariscal.
Thank you, Mayor. I have nothing to report this evening.
Okay. Police, trustee Carter.
Yeah, I just wanna make a comment of the police officers are doing a No Shave for November, and the donations are going to the food baskets for Heights residents honor flight?
And honor flight.
And honor flight, okay. So Chief, you wanna chime in, or?
This is the, the second annual No Shave in November and December. And November will be going for the Heights food baskets. December will be going for the honor flight, which is most of the law enforcement agents in the Tri-County area also get involved in this, and it's for a good cause. So appreciative that you're stepping up.
Anything else, trustee Carter?
Um, no, I think that'll do.
Okay.
Thank you.
I did see, though, that was TNT's doing a fundraiser for you guys on the 8th of December?
That's the, I believe, the annual Santa Claus breakfast, but I'm not sure on that date. I think we did post it to our website.
Yeah, I thought I saw that.
Yeah, I think they just notified Sarah today unless Sarah has.
Yeah, I think it's the 8th, the same day as Chocolate in the Heights. So, yeah, it's from 8:00 to 11:00. And there's a Facebook event for that as well.
Okay. All right, Building and Maintenance, trustee Gett.
Thank you, Mayor Phelan. I had nothing to report at this time.
Okay, Fire, trustee Recker.
Thank you, Mayor. I have nothing.
Public Works, trustee Harn.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I have nothing right now.
Okay, Administration, trustee Diane Mariscal.
Um, just a couple things I wanted to let you all know with the handbook, that council has looked at that and approved that. So we should be getting copies out to everybody to take a look at that. Again, I think anything that was changed is either gonna be highlighted or underlined in red for any changes we've made or updates that we've added. Did you have anything else to say about that, or?
No, just that I've been working with Eric Christie from HR FIT for the last five months on this, and then it just went through legal. So we've got a lot of eyes on it, and I think it's gonna be a nice product when we bring it to the board next month for approval, so.
Okay. Anything else, trustee Mariscal?
The only other thing is I'm, I'm not sure that, I think pretty much all the trustees got it, was for the Veterans Breakfast. That's gonna be also on the 8th at the VFW with Jahan Gordon. So I just kinda wanted to put that out there in case anybody wasn't aware that that was gonna be going on. I believe it starts at 8 o'clock at the VFW on Lake.
Okay, thank you. All right, on to comments from the audience. Any comments from the audience tonight? Just please come forward. If you would give your name and address, please. Welcome, ladies. I didn't see you all the way in the back.
I'm Teresa McDay, 3828 Harvard Avenue in Peoria.
It's Barb Malascio. My business address is 4607 North Prospect Road, Peoria Heights.
And Katie Parker of Susan G. Coman Memorial Affiliate in Brimfield, Illinois.
The reason we're here tonight is we had a Paint the Heights Pink event, and we wanted to do a check presentation to Susan G. Coman. The Heights, I started the project, my mother was diagnosed with breast cancer in October of 2017, and I started a project of painting survivors and went straight to Exhibit A Gallery, who jumped on board, and Susan G. Coman as well. And we developed a Paint the Heights Pink, and we managed to raise $2,200. And so I would like Katie from Susan G. Coman to say a few words.
Thank you. And thank you so much for all the partnership in this room, because you really did help to make this event possible. And it all started with the dream from Teresa, who truly made survivors feel amazing. And we wanted to say thank you to all of our partners. I'm gonna, I know them all, but I'm gonna read them, 'cause there's just a few. The Chamber of Peoria Heights, the Village of Peoria Heights, Hearth Cayenne, Joe's, Noir, Peoria Pizza Works, the Public House, TNT's, Oliver's, and W.E. Sullivan's. So as you can see, we had participation from almost every restaurant. I'll say it's an our inaugural event, 'cause we plan to hopefully do this again next year, and I think Teresa had maybe mentioned that as well. And $2,200, I don't know if that sounds like a lot, it means a lot. And just to put that into perspective, some of that money came from the gallery event, from art sales, and also from Barb's generous donation as well, from Exhibit A Gallery, and also the restaurants donating 10% of their sales on specific nights with a Paint the Heights Pink card. So that, we were able to drive with this event over $7,700 in business to restaurants in the Heights and also through Exhibit A Gallery, and we're very proud of that. So I should ask permission for this earlier. Are we able to do a photo at the check presentation? If you're maybe able to stand and we can get a photo to say thanks? Is that okay?
Want us all to do that now?
Yes, if that's okay. Well, I'll do it very quickly.
You want us to stand at the podium?
Or if you guys can just stand where you're at, I won't make you work too hard. And if I have a volunteer from the audience to do a photo. And Kim LaHugh, you need to come up here, my friend. So Kim is a friend of mine and ours, and between Kim and I, we have about 10 years of survivorship in the room. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all for being here, and we look forward to doing this with you again next year. We're honored to partner with you. Okay, we're still at comments from the audience. Anyone else? Comments going once, twice? Comments from the audience are closed. We'll move on to old business. Any old business come before the board? Okay, on to new business. The first is a Small Business Saturday proclamation. Here. All right, welcome Michaela Vincent, who's the chamber liaison. Whereas the government of, of the Village of Peoria Heights celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community, according to the United States Small Business Administration, there are currently 30.2 million small businesses in the United States. They represent 99.7% of all businesses with employee, employees in the United States, are responsible for 65.9% of net new jobs created from 2000 to 2017. And whereas, small businesses employ 47.5% of the employees in the private sector of the United States. And whereas, 90% of the consumers in the United States say Small Business Saturday has a positive impact on their community. And whereas, 89% of consumers who are aware of Small Business Saturday said the day encourages them to shop small all year long. And whereas, 73% of consumers who reportedly shop small at independently-owned retailers and restaurants on Small Business Saturday did so with friends or family. And whereas, the most reported reason for consumers aware of the day to shop and dine at small, independently-owned businesses was to support their community. And whereas, the Village of Peoria Heights supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our communities. And whereas, advocacy groups, as well as public and private organizations across the country, have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. Now therefore, I, Michael Lee Phelan, Mayor of the Peoria, Mayor of Peoria Heights, do hereby proclaim November 24th, 2018, a Small Business Saturday, and urge the residents of our community and communities across the country to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday throughout the year. So congratulations on that, Michaela. And. Michaela, we're really lucky in the community to have Michaela working for the Chamber of Commerce. She works really close with the Village of Peoria Heights. We're proud of this partnership, so now would be a good time for you to say a few things about all the good things happening in the Heights.
Thank you. You know, I'll keep this very short. I know this is a long, lengthy agenda. Thank you, Mayor Phelan. Thank you to everyone in this room that's been so supportive. I could not, would not be able to do this on my own. I am honored to be here to support our small businesses, and I plan on being here for a long time. So, yeah, things are growing and getting better, and we're just making a lot of progress. So hopefully that continues. Thank you.
And we, they could help that by joining the Chamber of Commerce.
Yeah.
Not a member.
Right, yeah, right, yes. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Resolution 2018-9, a resolution to include taxable allowances as IMRF earnings. Trustee Diane Mariscal, could I have a motion to approve that?
I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution 2018-9.
Do I have a second? I do, okay. Go ahead, Diane.
I actually think I'm gonna let Stephanie talk about this. She can explain it a little bit better.
Okay, Stephanie.
I mean, I understand it, but I think she can explain it better.
So we recently just finished an audit with IMRF. We joined in 1972, and this is the first time they audited us. Everything came back very good, except for one item, and it was that we were paying, we were reporting meals, which is a small stipend that the Public Works employees receive if they work more than five hours of overtime, or if they come in a couple hours early or a couple hours late. It's designed to be a pay that they receive if they miss a meal at home, if they're called into work instead of being home during hours they would reasonably eat. So we were reporting it to IMRF as earnings, and they have informed me that it is not an eligible IMF earning. So their solutions were two things. We could either adjust all of our wages of the Public Works employees who had received mail pay, or meal pay as far back as we possibly could, which would be at most seven years, because we just don't have those records on hand to go back to 1972. Or the board could pass this resolution, which is before you. It's essentially a paperwork thing. We've already paid IMRF for those earnings. We've been reporting them since 1972. This will not cost the village anything. And it's also very specifically worded so that it doesn't open the village up to any other taxable items. It is just this one item that has been reported to IMRF that was not something that they knew we were reporting. So they just need us to pass this so that their paperwork and ours match.
So it's basically just a housekeeping?
It's a housekeeping issue.
And that is in the union contract, correct?
It is in the union contract, yes.
Yeah, we're not changing anything, right?
Not changing anything. We're just getting IMF, IMRF on board with what we were already doing.
Okay.
So then going forward, is it still gonna be included, then?
Yes, because it already was included in the past. So we're, yeah, the paperwork is basically to notarate, or notify IMRF of what we were doing. It's a way for us to formally say to them, hey, we're doing this thing.
Gotcha. And like we had talked earlier before the meeting, it's not like this happens all the time. It's kinda.
No, I mean, honestly, it's maybe half a dozen times a year. It's a very small thing.
Okay.
All right, anyone else? All right, madam clerk, call the roll.
Trustee Harn.
Aye.
Trustee Gett.
Aye.
Trustee Dan Mariscal.
Aye.
Trustee Diane Mariscal.
Aye.
Trustee Recker.
Aye.
Trustee Carter.
Aye.
All right, that passes. Next, an approval of an administrator contract between the Village of Peoria Heights and Dustin Sutton. There is an executive session that I did put on, if, if you so choose, only for this reason. If you don't feel it's necessary, we can vote on this now. So I'm open for a motion either way.
I moved out before the executive session, just vote on this.
You making a motion to approve the contract?
Right.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion on the, the motion?
I, I just had one thing to say, and I've talked to Dustin about this prior to tonight's meeting, so he knows how I feel. I think Dustin does a great job as chief of police. I think he's done a great job getting everything up to speed here, the village, with the handbook and the employees, and, so I want that to be known. I would feel more comfortable if the job position were actually for maybe an office manager as opposed to the village administrator. And the only reason I'm saying that is because looking at our job description that we have for the Heights, I don't believe he meets the qualifications. Do I think he could do the job at some point, learn it? I think it, with all the growth and the change and the things we have coming in the Heights, I'm not sure that I feel comfortable with making this particular contract and him the actual administrator. I wish we had put it out for applicants, but we chose not to, so. And I also think that the pay's too high. Looking back as to when Matt Fix started, as, with the qualifications, he started, I believe around 62, if I'm not mistaken, and we're paying 50 for part-time. So that's kinda why we sorta brought the offer down, up a little bit from where it was, but yet down a little bit from what he was asking. So I just wanted to say that. I, I want you to know that I haven't, don't think that, that Dustin can't handle this, but if I had to vote, the way I'm gonna vote it is probably going to be no, just for those reasons. So I just wanted that to be known.
Okay, anyone else?
Doing more than just the administrator, he's also within over Public Works and HR, so it's not just administrator. He's, he's doing a job.
Well, the administrator's job is to be over HR. I mean, we had a position out there that we were going to fill for an HR person, but we dropped that thinking that we wouldn't need it. If you remember correctly, I think that was in the budget for this year. I think that the two gentlemen that are running pretty much with this, the street department are doing a fantastic job. I would, couldn't be happier or prouder of what they're doing. I don't know how much Chief Sutton has to oversee that, because I think that they're pretty equipped to handle that, but that's just me.
But they can't, but they can't do the HR part of it because of the union.
Well, I would think the union would have to step in on that, am I correct?
Well, our, our two guys are in the union, so they can't discipline other union members.
And does that happen often? That you have those problems?
Probably not.
Well, since we just adopted, there were no general orders for the Public Works Department until seven months ago, so one, they couldn't take any action. But since we do have that stuff and those general orders in place now, now, now we can. But you're exactly right, union members cannot discipline union members. And we have met with the, the union, the head of the union, and they're comfortable with this structure. But as, as far as today's date and having any issues, not to the point where it took action, I would say.
So this wasn't just a unilateral decision. This, a lot of thought and collaboration went, went into this. So as Chief Sutton said, we met with Tim Schmidt-Gall, who's the business representative for the Labor's Local 165, met many times with Mike Casey and Dave Marfil. It was their decision to stay in the bargaining unit, and if they chose to step out of the bargaining unit, it could have been different. But because of that reason, that's why we arranged the, the contract the way we did.
Right, I have no, I have no qualms about that, Mayor. I'm not saying that. All I'm saying is, look at the qualification, minimum qualifications for the job. That's all I'm saying. But again, that is just my opinion.
Well, I just wanna make a couple of comments. You keep referring to minimum qualifications, I understand that. I also looked at the ordinance that the administrator was hired under, and there's nothing, it contradicts the job description. And as far as the job description, back in 2009 that was adopted, there's probably 40% of this was never done with the, the administrator that I replaced, one being a residency requirement. So I think there's a lot of contradiction between the ordinance of the administrator and the job description. I think that that definitely needs to be tightened up. And I'm not a big fan of picking and choosing when you wanna go off one thing or another. I know it's irrelevant, and I know that every board member has, has the right to vote their opinion, and I respect that. You and I have had that discussion. But looking at these two documents, they're very contradicting. There's a lot in that that isn't in this one, and I'm not sure who came up with this 2009, but there's about 40% of the job description he did not do. So anyway, I just wanted to make that point, but I think that, I know that you guys are probably tired of talking about this more than I am. So anyway, that's, we'll just, we, we agree to disagree, so.
Anyone else?
I have one quick comment.
Yes, go ahead.
Dustin's been doing the job of administrator for almost a year, and everything's going great as far as I can see. I haven't seen him make one mistake, not drop one, one ball. I mean, things are going really well, and I think we should, I, I like the way they're going. I would just like to continue right on, so.
Well, I appreciate that support, and it makes me, it makes me wanna go back to one more point, and trustee Mariscal touched on it as well. And as, as well as everything is going, it's not because I haven't had any help. The work of the staff here in this building, the work of the Public Works Department, not only from, from Dave and Mike, but all the way down, the police department, everybody has stepped up here and done an outstanding job. And I might be the face of the administration and driving this bus, but I'll tell you, my butt, my team is great, they're efficient, and this, the staff here in this building. I mean, I could talk all night on this, but I know we wanna get out of here because it's a long agenda. But things are going well. I've been here 24 years, I've seen a lot of things. I've been, I've been sitting up here for 20. Things are going very well. You should be very proud of the employees you have here, who you have running things. And not to mention, you know, I'm very proud, I'm gonna be very proud of the budget come the end of the year, 'cause I think we're all gonna be very surprised on what we've done. And again, that's been a team effort as well. But I just wanna touch on that, because as much as I appreciate that, it's, I have a lot, I have good people behind me, so.
And let me just take this time to thank the employees as well. This contract is to appoint Dustin Sutton, but the employees I couldn't be more proud of. But in Mr. Sutton, we get someone of great integrity, who's a, a real leader, someone who gives 100% of their time and talent, who is an excellent communicator. So people in the organization wanna get behind him, they want him, and they want us, and they want the village to succeed. So I, I couldn't be more proud of the job that he and everyone else has done. If there's no more comment, trustee, or counsel, Walton, if, if you would just state what exactly this does, there's no additional pension, there's no additional benefits, it's simply an additional stipend or salary for additional duties, would you?
Exactly. This, this is a contract for, it, it doesn't have a specific term, there's nothing about severance. It's, he serves at the pleasure of the mayor, and, you know, the agreement can be terminated at any time. There's no provision for any kind of automatic wage increases. And as you pointed out, there's no benefits. It's just a stipend for the additional responsibilities associated with the administrator position.
And has no impact nor will enhance his police pension?
That, that is correct.
No participation in IMRF?
No IMRF, no other pension or retirement.
Okay, thank you. Any questions, trustee Recker?
It said April of 2021, and am I wrong about that?
That's true, it goes to the mayor's term.
Okay. Well, he said, it was not.
I, I was talking about the termination by the village, can happen at any time.
He's an at-will employee.
But it can't go past the mayor's term, so.
Correct.
Unless it's terminated sooner, it would end up the mayor's term.
And again, this is, it's really an appointment, it's not. All right. Any other comment? Okay, madam clerk, call the roll.
Trustee Harn.
Aye.
Trustee Gett.
Aye.
Trustee Dan Mariscal.
Aye.
Trustee Diane Mariscal.
No.
Trustee Recker.
Aye.
Trustee Carter.
Aye.
Okay. Congratulations, Dustin, good luck.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, next, recommendation of approval for use of Tower Park for the American Cancer Society event, Night of Hope on Friday, June 7th, 2019. Trustee Dan Mariscal, I'd ask for a motion to approve this.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion for approval for the use of Tower Park for the American Cancer Society event on Friday, June 7th, 2019.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there anyone here from this organization? Welcome. Would you come up and give us your name, please? And I know we met with another representative recently, but tell us a little bit about the event, please.
My name's Courtney Devler. You probably met with Audrey Williams.
We met with Audrey, yes.
Yes, she's the leader on this. She was not able to be here tonight, so I'm a volunteer. I have been with the organization for about three years now. And normally, we have been doing it at the river, but the location just doesn't seem right. We really liked the Heights, it's more central for everyone, they can enjoy the local businesses after the event's over. We just really wanna get it involved with families and everyone getting off of work. It's a great location, and we just wanna enjoy a summer night.
Okay, well, we're happy to have you here and looking forward to a really good event.
Thank you.
Any questions? Any comments, any trustees? Okay. Madam clerk, call the roll.
Trustee Harn.
Aye.
Trustee Gett.
Aye.
Trustee Dan Mariscal.
Aye.
Trustee Diane Mariscal.
Aye.
Trustee Recker.
Aye.
Trustee Carter.
Aye.
All right, that passes, thank you. Next is a request for approval of an exterior beautification program, application from Cipco Products Incorporated. Trustee Mariscal, I'd ask for a motion to approve this.
I'd like to make a motion for approval of an exterior beautification program from Cipco Products. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Shields, are you here to speak to this motion? Welcome, Kevin Shields, he's the chair of the Business Development District Committee.
Evening, Kevin Shields, 5840.
Evening, uh, Kevin Shields, 5814 North Prospect. Um, as some of you may know, I serve as the Chairman of the BDD Committee, which, uh, is an advisory committee solely for the purpose of kinda doing some of the lake work for you guys in reviewing applications, make sure they, making sure they conform to, uh, both the Business Development District statute, as well as, um, some of the additional, uh, restrictions or guidelines that the village has placed on, um, those funds. Obviously, as you know, in the Business Development District, one percent is charged on certain sales, that goes into a fund, those funds are spent in various ways. Sometimes they go to certain redevelopment agreements for certain development projects, but otherwise, they go into a fund that, um, a program has been created here at the Village of Peoria Heights, which I think is great, which allows business owners to apply for those funds. Um, it's a seventy-five percent, uh, kinda matching grant, um, program, and those funds can be used for, for most part, at this, at exterior beautification. We want the funds to be seen, right, used and to be seen and to, uh, increase the appearance of, uh, certain businesses here in, uh, the village, especially in the district, obviously. So, we met twice, actually, couldn't get quorum either time, so, uh, legal counsel double-checked me on all this. So we were not able to take any final action at these meetings, but we were able to hold a meeting and, uh, review the application. Uh, in reviewing that application, I can tell you that they've requested, uh, ten thousand dollars in funds, which is the max under the program. It's for a twenty-three-thousand-dollar, um, project. So, uh, the matching grants, if they were to do a thirteen-thousand-dollar project, they would get ten thousand, but they're actually going quite a bit above that. So, um, this property is located at forty-three oh-one North Prospect Road, which is right on Prospect and Lake. Uh, its identity apparel, if you ever seen it, it's got the telephone pole that kinda goes through the roof, that's a little, little funny-looking. In reviewing the completed application, we also reviewed, uh, contractor's estimate for the project from American Builders, Inc., aerial and street-level pictures of the property and its existing state, as well as a conceptual sketch of the project upon completion. Hope that's not me. Okay. Um, findings I can give you, based on my research, and these were all agreed upon, um, by the members, there was no objection to them. Uh, was that the property is in fact located within the, the, uh, boundaries of the Business Development District. The property and the applicant, so Cipco and the property are bo, are all owned by John Banta, Marion Banta, Terry Groy, and Eileen Groy. Um, they have not previously requested funds under the program in the prior fiscal year. The property's most recent real estate taxes, which would be two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and seventeen taxes payable in two thousand and eighteen, have been paid in full. Um, the project as proposed complies with the Business Development District and Redevelopment Act, the Illinois statute. Um, the project as proposed will further, uh, stimulate the type of commercial revitalization that is consistent with, um, the redevelopment plan that the Peoria Heights has put forward for the district, and is in the best interest of the Village of Peoria Heights. I think especially with this project, one of the things that was discussed, and I'll tell you, is my personal opinion, is this is a great property for the first project. It's right on Prospect and Lake, it's very visible, um, it's a bit of a rundown building, i- it needs an improvement. And, and what they're proposing doing is not simply putting on new siding, it's gonna have a new entrance, and it's really gonna make it look quite nice. So I think one of the incidental benefits of this project is not only is it a great use of the funds, I think it'll also make this program a little bit more aware to the other businesses, which is a problem that we've had. You think if I, uh, you know, if somebody was gonna pay seventy-five percent of your project, we'd have more people asking for money, and we're not, and we need them to. And I think a lot of people, just at this point in time, maybe don't know what the program is or how to get the money. So when this project's done and people talk about it, we can say that was done with BDD funds, and hopefully we can get more people to ask for those funds, uh, in, in general. So, I think it's a great first project. So again, um, since we were not able to meet quorum, there's eleven members of the BDD Committee, three vacant seats, we were not able to get the quorum. I hope at some point, this board looks at a, at a, at a ordinance to lower that number, so we can start getting quorum. Um, we were not able to take final action, cannot give you a, an, uh, an official recommendation for this project, but my personal opinion is, it meets the qualifications, it should be approved, and there was no objection from any of the individual members present at the meeting, um, that would say otherwise. So, but we cannot, uh, give you a final, uh, recommendation at this point.
Any questions for Mr. Shields before he sits down?
Can we ask a question?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Yeah, I have, I have several.
Sure.
Okay, so, when they, um, you said it was, the total is twenty-three thousand, and we're gonna give them ten?
Correct.
Right?
Correct.
Okay, so twenty-three thousand to do all that. Are they, so it's round, so what are they, they're getting rid of the round? Is that what they're doing? Isn't, the building's round?
It's a little angular, it's not round, it's a little angular on that edge. There's kind of a bevel, I would call it a beveled edge, but it's not, it's not really round. You might be thinking of, are you thinking of a different building?
No, I'm talking about Prospect and-
And Lake.
And Lake, and the, the building, when you go up Lake, like Prospect and Lake, it goes around, so inherently it looks like they're squaring it up. So are these two in the front? I'm just curious. These two gonna be on lit, on Prospect, these two opening?
Correct, yeah, correct.
And it does have-
And one-
Entrance off Lake.
Yeah.
Is that what you're thinking?
Yes. And one of those is a new entrance, I believe. So if you look at it now, there's kind of one, that one on the right is kind of the larger, that's, that's existing-
Right.
And they're basically taking that left one and making, so it matches it, and it's kind of a symmetrical with two, two openings, yeah, two entrances.
So with them doing this, do they have to go in front of the zoning board to get approved on all of this?
No, I don't believe so, no, no.
Okay, okay.
Not that I'm aware of.
On the exterior improvements?
Well, yeah, they're not changing anything, it's just cosmetic.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, anything else they're doing on their own, inside the building, I mean, that could change, and they might, but as far as this application-
Now, they'll have to get a building permit, for sure.
Yeah, right.
And I don't think they'd have to go on zoning, but I mean, if they do, they do.
I guess-
Legal counsel-
Um, they might need site plan approval, uh, through the ZDA, so, um, you know, if they're gonna get a, a building permit that does have a site plan requirement, so.
Yeah, okay. I mean, I'm not aware that their actual footprint would change, but-
Yeah, I don't think it is. At least the last time, we had, we had met with them with Steve Klein, and that, they did not have any, anything changing, unless that's changed.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
So we're not, we're not voting on anything on this tonight, them approving it?
No, I, no, you are, 'cause you don't need our recommendation. I mean, I mean, we're, we're here to just do the legwork for you, and kinda make sure that they're meeting these requirements, and I can tell you that I've looked at that, but the board never took a, I'm sorry, our committee never took a vote, because we never had quorum. So, um, you don't need our recommendation to, to-
It was unanimous, for, for the members that were present.
Correct.
Well, even though you didn't have a quorum, the committee did its due diligence-
Correct.
-in looking into this application.
Yes, and I, and the one thing, the other thing I guess I would make clear is, your approval is essentially conditional, and what that means is, they still need to complete the project within a certain amount of time, come back with the invoices and have those costs verified, that they were completed and they're BDD eligible of costs. So essentially, what you're approving is, you're approving the project to say, yes, if you do this, we do approve, in general, the project, but you're, you still need to come back, and that needs to go to the consultants to say, yes, these are eligible expenses in the way that, you know, you did them as, you know, proposed.
Nothing's upfront, nothing's-
Correct.
Front.
Yes, nothing's upfront.
Okay, so you got the application before October 30th, right?
It was, uh, October 12th, 2018, is I believe, when it was submitted.
So they have a hundred and eighty days from that date, or a hundred and eighty days from the date that we approved it to get that done? Is that the way I read that? Projects must be completed within a hundred and eighty days of grant awards or prior to April 30th.
Nick Nelson, uh, would you mind coming, you can take this other microphone, this other seat, if you don't mind, uh-
I just wanna make sure if they're doing it this late in game, the weather's gonna be crappy, or they, we don't, I wouldn't wanna penalize them or something if they can't get it done, 'cause we don't, so.
Right, right.
Yeah, I, I believe it's a hundred and eighty days from when it's approved by the board, and then they have a hundred and eighty days to complete the project, and then submit the costs, and then, um, once we verify that the costs are, businesses are eligible, we're in fact used on the project, um, then you can go and approve the final payment, reimbursement to the, to the developer.
So I, it would be a hundred and eighty days from day, but I think I'd make clear, I mean, unless someone's gonna tell me otherwise, that's your guys' requirement, that's not in the statute. That, that's your requirement, 'cause you didn't wanna approve projects, say, oh, two years from now you got it done. So that's, so if, if they get to April 25th and they go, oh, we need another month, I, I mean, that's gonna be up to you guys to say, we'll extend it for you.
I just didn't wanna, like-
Well, 'cause it's winter.
I didn't wanna, like, sit here and get their-
I think they'd be able to come before the board, though, and say, hey, you know, you know, just putting it out there. Are they doing more than just this side of the building, or are they just doing one side?
I, I, the building is kinda funny-looking, where it's got a, kind of a different facade than the back, but I think, my understanding is from the project, it's that entire front that faces Prospect, and also that smaller portion that kinda wraps around to Lake, but I don't believe they're doing anything on the farther backside, that just, that doesn't have the same facade.
Right, yeah, correct, yeah, exactly.
Correct.
That was my impression.
They're not doing anything on that side.
Not at this, not at this point.
Are, are they changing, are they putting a new roof on or anything?
Mine, they're not putting a new roof, they're putting a new, so they have an actual, uh, flat roof, but then, there's a bit of what it looks like an awning. I, I would call it more of an awning, it's part of the facade, it's got kinda those shaker-style, uh, shingles that kinda comes over. They are replacing that, which is more kind of a, in a-
'Cause this looks like-
It's a mancered roof, yeah. I've, uh, they just gotta replace, take the shakes off, put some underlayment underneath there-
Yeah.
And put the new shakes on there.
Right.
And it'll look a lot better. I, I remember when that was old Speed Service Gas Station, it, it needs some, it needs to be fixed up.
Yeah.
Okay. I just have a few questions, I just wanna make, thank you.
Anyone else? Nick, did we leave anything out?
Uh, I think that covers it.
Okay. Kevin, thanks, uh, and, well, before you sit down, I just want to, if you don't know, Kevin Shields, uh, also owns Heritage Square, a fine property here in Peoria Heights. Thanks for all you do for the village, and this is no, uh, easy task, being Chair of this BDD Committee, and you put a lot of time and effort in, and we appreciate it, so.
Happy to do it.
Thank you.
I mean, I think you guys all know the village has, has helped us grow tremendously, helped all the other businesses grow tremendously, and right now, um, I can tell you out there among the business owners, people are really excited about the direction of the village, and so, something like this, happy to jump in and help out. I know that a lot of other business owners are, are as well, 'cause we're all really excited about, kinda where, where, where the direction of the village is going, so happy to do it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kevin.
Any other discussion on this? Okay, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Trustee Harn?
Aye.
Trustee Gett?
Aye.
Trustee Dan Mariscal?
Aye.
Trustee Diane Mariscal?
Aye.
Trustee Riker?
Aye.
Trustee Carter?
Aye.
All right, that passes. Next, a request for approval for repair to a high-service pump control panel located at low-level pump station. Trustee Harn?
Uh-
Could I have a motion to approve this?
Oh, I make a motion, we approve this.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, go back to you, Trustee Harn.
Thank you, Mayor.
And Dave?
Dave, uh, Dave emailed me about this, uh, there's a circuit board that's bad, and, uh, the, uh, the original is no longer available, but they did find a replacement, if I understand-
Retroque, uh, retro, that's, retro kit, yes, there you go.
So, the, the labor is a hundred, it's thirty-nine-hundred dollars, and, uh, the labor is a hundred and twenty-five per hour, is, will that be additional to the thirty-nine-hundred?
Yes, that'll be additional. That does not, that three thousand nine hundred does not include labor, and they were saying three or four hours of labor.
Okay, so that's not real bad, then. Uh, well, we have to have it, so.
Yeah, the, the, these, uh, these high-pressure pumps push the water up the hill, so we, we have three of them, we now have two, 'cause this one's been out for a while, so, yeah, we definitely need to get this one fixed.
So this controls, uh, the, the valves to the pump, then, is that-
Yeah, it controls the actual pump motor to push the, the water up the hill.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
Any questions for Trustee Harn or Mr. Marphell?
I'm telling you, you need to go on the water tour.
Yeah, I'll go down and take a look at it.
You would totally understand that.
That's a good point, Trustee Carter.
It's encouragement, kind of a little-
Any, any, anyone else? Okay, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Trustee Harn?
Aye.
Trustee Gett?
Aye.
Trustee Dan Mariscal?
Aye.
Trustee Diane Mariscal?
Aye.
Trustee Riker?
Aye.
Trustee Carter?
Aye.
All right, that passes. Next is a request for approval to list a 1994 Chevy rescue truck with Fire Truck Resource, with a sale price of ten thousand dollars or best offer. Trustee Harn, I'd ask for a motion to approve that.
Make a motion, we approve this.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
I do, okay, go ahead, gentlemen.
Well, again-
I'll take this, if you want to.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so this is our, uh, it's in your packet, this is our current, um, water service utility vehicle, which is, it's listed here, the, the big red machine, we call it. Need to get rid of this, as we are currently in the, uh, searching stages for a new one, which you guys approved, uh, I believe, last month. Um, this website, Fire Truck Resource, um, they have agreed to list this vehicle on their website for us with a payment to them of ten percent commission of this total sale price, if and when we, uh, they sell this vehicle for us. I confirm with them via email that there is no listing charge or listing fee, they only get their ten percent if and when they sell this for us. Um, in my opinion, this website and the people who run it have the contacts and the knowledge, uh, to sell this type of vehicle that we do not, as a village or as a public works department, have. Um, and the copy of the agreement, and then the, the, uh, copy of the ad that he would post on the website, his website is listed, or attached to this. Um, a couple things, he, he came out a few weeks ago and, uh, appraised the vehicle. Um, the first sheet on that, of the packet, it has a, uh, average retail value of ten to twelve thousand dollars, which I was shocked at. Um, this vehicle was appraised, uh, three or four years ago by the previous, uh, previous superintendent, and the appraised value was like thirty-five-hundred dollars, that was done at a local dealership. Why there's a big difference, I don't know. Um, but that was good news. So I, Mike and I sat down and talked, we thought, we came up with the, the, uh, the price of ten thousand dollars as a starting, or best offer. Um, we don't wanna sit on it, I think that's, the ten thousand dollars is a good start, in, in our opinion, so that's why we came up with ten thousand dollars. Questions?
So if a reasonable offer is, is given to you guys, then will they come back to you and Mike to make?
Yeah, correct, they'd come back to, to us and off, you know, give us the offer, and then I guess it'd be up to us to, uh, if you guys want us to come back to you and give us the, that offer, or you can rely on us to, you know, to make a-
I'm not sure what-
So you're gonna list it as for ten thousand for best offer, is that what they're-
Yes, that's what we, yes.
Well, I say we let them make the call on that. I mean, is, I don't see any reason, if they get a fair offer, and they think it's fair, that they should have to come back to us to say, oh, yeah, go ahead, whoa-
Right, yeah.
Let's, let's jump on and get this thing-
With their being one meeting a month, you know, if, if somebody gives us a good offer and we have to wait, we have to sit on it, they may move on and find something else. That's, that's just my opinion.
Plus, our, our meeting is being televised, so we don't wanna discuss what we consider the low number on it, so maybe, maybe-
Both excellent points.
Right after the meeting.
I think the low number's like twenty-five grand.
Anyone else? Okay, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Trustee Harn?
Aye. Aye.
Trustee Gett.
Aye.
Trustee Dan Mariscal.
Aye.
Trustee Diane Mariscal.
Aye.
Trustee Riker.
Aye.
Trustee Carter.
Aye.
All right, thank you, that passes. Next, request for approval to purchase a Tremble GIS unit in the amount of $5,697.39 from Precision Midwest using funds from the Infrastructure and Maintenance Program. Trustee Harn, I'd ask for a motion to approve this.
I make a motion, we approve the piece of GIS equipment.
And a second?
Second.
All right, go ahead, Trustee Harn.
Okay, on this one, the guys have been borrowing, Dave and I talked, so that's why I know, the guys have been borrowing a piece of equipment from Tri-County Regional Planning Commission. And they have had it for two years. And what, it's an instrument. And it uses GPS to pinpoint where water, a curb stop is, or a gas line, or electric line, or a storm drain. And basically, Tri-County came in and said, "Hey, you've had our instrument for two years. We want it back, but the work's not complete." And it's ongoing, because things are constantly being added to the Village Fiber Optic. Yeah, new gas line, you name it, it's always been changing. So it's nice to have our own, so we can continue to update our GIS. And the GIS is the...
It's basically a computerized, it's all the city infrastructure on computer-based, a computer-based program, yeah. Mark Goss has been doing this strictly, pretty much full-time for the last two years. He's, you can get as, you can mark trees on this thing. So the amount of information that you can put on this thing is very elaborate. He's got all the water infrastructure complete. He's about 60% complete with the storm sewers. We haven't really talked about what's next. But we do need this piece of equipment. There's always updating, especially for the water infrastructure. There's always updating that we have to do. And to stay on course with this program, which is a fabulous program, we need this, our own unit, basically, to continue adding information to it, to make it useful.
So when you, let's say, if it does get approved, and you get this, all the work that you've done so far, will it transfer?
Yes, yeah, yeah, yeah. This basically just allows us to continue to move in the, move forward with that, with that program, yeah. And Mark does a, he's a fabulous job, so... Yeah, we can access all of this information from our phones, iPads. Yeah, wow. The days of, I know you saw that, the big map, and that, those days are, I wrote it, yeah.
Okay, anyone else? All right, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Harn.
I'm going to vote aye, but before I do, I, when this vote is done, while I still have the floor, I have one more thing I'd like to add for Public Works. So for now, aye.
All right, we'll come back to you, Brian.
Okay, thanks.
Trustee Harn.
Aye.
Trustee Gett.
Aye.
Trustee Dan Mariscal.
Aye.
Trustee Diane Mariscal.
Aye.
Trustee Riker.
Aye.
Trustee Carter.
Aye.
That passes. Trustee Harn, you have the floor.
Yeah, I just wanted to mention that our Public Works Department was tested with that little snow we had over the weekend, and they came through with flying colors. They, Mike and the guys, they really did a great job. The roads hit kind of at a odd time, where traffic was just getting ready to start. And just, everything looked great. I mean, I drove all over, I was, I had business, and I was driving around, and you could just see the heights always looks better than the other places you go when you leave the heights.
Thank you, Brian, for that. I wholeheartedly agree. In fact, I was driving around, listening to a local radio station who were telling their listeners how bad the roads were in the area, other than here in Peoria Heights. So they didn't mention that, but I had personal experience driving, so I could have called in and told them, "They're great here, come out here."
Yes.
Thanks, Brian. Okay, next is ordinance 2018-1572, an ordinance amending Title 10, Chapter 8A of the Village Code of the Village of Peoria Heights for the purpose of modifying certain requirements for residential uses in the B1 Central Business District. Trustee Dan Mariscal, I'd ask for a motion to approve this.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance 2018-1572.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, go ahead, Trustee Mariscal.
I'm actually going to defer to Council Walton on this.
Thank you, Trustee Mariscal. This may sound familiar from last month, but when we were confronted with the PH Samuel variance application, we discovered that there's, I hesitate to call it an error, but there's a color coding mistake on the zoning map that led to some confusion with respect to properties that are actually zoned B1, but are residential use. And that's had a little bit of an impact. We, you know, our zoning ordinance has different requirements, obviously, for B1 zone properties from the residential R1, R2, R3. And these R3, these residential properties that we thought were R3, but are actually B1, you can build right up to the property line. There's all kinds of zoning rules that would apply to business properties that aren't really appropriate for residential. We had, last year, changed the ordinance for B1. And if you look on the second page of this ordinance, you'll see that paragraph D, or subsection D. And we had taken that out with the idea that there were no longer any residential properties that were zoned B1. And again, that was oversight. That was a misreading of the map because of the color coding error. The zoning board had requested that I take a look at this. And they're recommending that we sort of go back, amend the ordinance back to require compliance with residential zoning for the residential lots that are located in the B1 district.
Okay, I'm sure there'll be some questions on this. So trustees, any questions for council? Any discussion? All right, I guess you explained it very well. Madam Clerk, Dan, anything else from you?
That'll conclude my portion, thank you.
All right, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Trustee Harn.
Aye.
Trustee Gett.
Aye.
Aye.
Trustee Dan Mariscal.
Aye.
Trustee Diane Mariscal.
Aye.
Trustee Riker.
Aye.
Trustee Carter.
Aye.
All right, that passes. Next, 2018-1573, an ordinance approving an amendment to the Peoria Heights Downtown Overlay District Plan. Trustee Mariscal, I'd ask for a motion to approve this.
I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance 2018-1573.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I do, okay, go ahead, Trustee Mariscal.
I'm also going to defer on this one to Council Walton.
Okay, same exact issue, but a different ordinance that was affected. The overlay district plan that was recently approved applies by its terms to all B1, B2, B4 zoned properties. And our idea, within the, basically, the Prospect Corridor, Glen on the north, Lake on the south. And we, again, assumed that all of those residential properties on the east side of Prospect that were color-coded for R3 zoning were in fact R3. And then when we discovered that they were B1, we needed to exclude them from the overlay district. The overlay district plan is not appropriate for those residential-only properties. It's fine for the business on the main level, apartments above, but not for the houses on Samuel and the streets on the east side of Prospect. So, simple fix to the overlay district plan, which is attached to the ordinance. I think the ordinance is a couple of pages, if you flip back. And Trustee Riker, I guess it's be the fourth page, pointed out that I neglected to highlight what was changed. The only thing that's changed in the plan is the very first paragraph. At the end, I added a phrase, "Provided, however, that the parcels identified on Schedule 1, attached here too, shall be excluded from the downtown overlay district." And then if you flip back about three more pages, you'll see Schedule 1 has a list of addresses and PIN numbers. Those are the residential addresses that are all B1-zoned residential properties that are going to be now excluded from the overlay district. Again, it's just a matter of appropriateness and the intent of the overlay district. And these houses shouldn't, shouldn't fall within the business district, so...
Okay, discussion of questions for council?
How does that, how does this affect, have any of these homes on Samuel been sold for the Samuel project? Does it matter?
Ooh, I think they have, it doesn't. I guess it does matter to the extent that the overlay district eliminated setbacks and things. This takes it back to what the original intent was, which is those houses need to comply with residential zoning, not commercial or business zoning. And they certainly don't, you know, fall within all of those new rules that we created for the overlay district. So, so yes, all that means is that the owner, whether it's PH Samuel, and I don't think Katie Kim's company owns all of these. They may own a few, but any of these owners that want to build, for example, closer to the street or higher density, they would have to go through the variance process to do that.
Okay, so even though we're kind of in the middle of the Samuel project?
Yes.
We can make these changes?
Oh yeah, we can make them. They only apply going forward. So any application that we've already received would be subject to the rules. Now, a lot of it depends on how these applications get processed, and that's going to be a function of how the zoning board treats them. Because nothing has been approved yet by the zoning board. So just understand they're all pending. But, but yes, it is going to, it could affect the project on a going-forward basis. It's just hard to say at this point, how everything's going to fall out.
Okay, anyone else? Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Trustee Harn.
Aye.
Trustee Gett.
Aye.
Trustee Dan Mariscal.
Aye.
Trustee Diane Mariscal.
Aye.
Trustee Riker. Trustee Carter.
Aye.
All right, that passes. Next, ordinance 2018-1574, an ordinance approving revisions to the application and fee requirements for zoning Board of Appeals hearings. Trustee Dan Mariscal, I'd ask for a motion to approve this.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance 2018-1574.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Trustee Mariscal.
Yet again, I'm going to defer to Council Walton.
Thank you.
The man of the hour.
This is the third item from last night's zoning board meeting. And the zoning board unanimously recommended adoption of a revised zoning application form. Again, this has sort of evolved over time, but it was heightened with the recent application by PH Samuel. And they've been spending an inordinate amount of time asking the developer for more information, clarifying what is needed under the ordinance. And it only made sense to clarify the application, so that someone can get the application and have a simple checklist to know what it is that they need to turn in in order to have a completed application. We also clarified or extended the timeline in terms of turning an application in and how soon you can have it heard. We had an incident where an application was turned in late on a Friday, and it needed to be published on a holiday weekend and just couldn't. And the way our rules were, the way the application read, that applicant was entitled to have their case heard. So anyway, to avoid confusion, avoid these sorts of problems, we've amended the application. It's now far clearer to the applicant. Doesn't mean they won't have any questions, but it's clear what the zoning board is looking for in an application. The other thing that we addressed is the application fee. The fee was $35. And that's fine if somebody wants a fence, you know. Many applications, that would be an appropriate fee. When you come in with, you know, 20-some variances on one application, it's inadequate. We spend far more than that just to publish the notice in the paper, much less sending out all the notices that we need to send out. So the new fee requirement is still $35, but it's per parcel. And then we added in that the applicant has to pay the actual costs that the village incurs for publishing notice and mailing out notices to surrounding property owners. So we're not trying to make money off of this, but nor do we want to, you know, spend a bunch of money, especially on applications that may or may not be approved.
I think, yeah, it's time to adjust that a little bit and start getting that number right, because I think it's going to start going pretty well.
Okay, questions, comments?
How much would it be? I mean, what, I'm sorry, Mike.
No, go ahead, Brian.
How much would, how much would it be then? I mean, the $35, that's just the application fee.
That's just the application fee per parcel. And then, Sarah, you, how many notices did you send out back in September?
It was about 300.
Okay, multiply that times seven. Certified mail's $7, right?
Mm-hmm.
$6.95, I think.
Okay.
That's one application. Now, that was an extraordinary application. That's not the typical what we get. But, you know, it makes sense that the applicant pay those actual costs. The other thing to do is you do what the City of Peoria does and just charge everybody $1,500 as an application fee. That's excessive. That would cover everything, but, you know, that, so I think the actual cost makes sense.
You've got to think about, I mean, how long did it take you to do that? So now it costs us, Sarah's, time to sit there and do all of that.
That's right.
And whoever else helped.
We don't want to be unreasonable, but at the same time, we don't want to foot the bill either.
Well, I thought we were going to take a look at some of the surrounding areas and see what they were charging. Because I think, like, Bartonville does 100 per parcel.
Yeah, I know Creed Court is 150. Peoria's high, Peoria's an outlier.
Yeah, that's crazy.
No, 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 no. So I didn't, you know, that's a sort of a bad, unfair example. But it does show you what other, and I did not do an assessment of all the communities in the area. I could certainly have my secretary check into that. For now, the ZBA was comfortable with the application fee being 35, as long as all the out-of-pocket that the village spends just to process the application, that that's on the applicant and not the village.
Which might turn out to be more than if we just charged a flat 100, right?
It could.
Well, there are a lot of fees that we need to revisit, because a lot of our fees have not been changed in years. I know that we've discussed that, bringing that to the board next month. And I've already started working on the surrounding communities, but we're talking, there were probably like, I think, 25 fees that we need to revisit. So I've got better communication than others from different communities. So I think next month, there will be something that's brought to the board. But there are a lot of fees that have been, haven't been changed since back in the 60s, I mean, 70s.
Well, when we do a comparison, let's do a comparison on the size that we are, not something that's double the size or, because I don't even want to see those numbers.
Oh, that makes sense.
It's my time looking at those numbers.
That makes sense.
So I want to get the same size that we are. That's what I want to see.
They'll be consistent, they'll be consistent to our community. They won't bring you Oak Brook or Bloomington or...
And one last point, you know, I would be remiss if I didn't point out, the zoning board has spent countless hours, not just processing the applications that we've received recently, but, you know, Kathy and Rick spent hours going through this application. So it's been well thought out. It's not something that they just, you know, slapped together. But through their experience over the last few months, they realize, look, you know, a lot of this headache could be saved if our forum just, you know, educated the applicants to what it is that we need. That way, we can say, "Well, look at that little checklist on the forum. If we have everything on there, then your application's complete. And if we don't..." So a lot of this is trial and error, and we've been tried a lot, I think, lately with some pretty significant applications. But it's been well thought out by people that are really working hard for the village, so...
Thanks for mentioning that, because those folks in that committee work really, really hard. They take that job very seriously, so thanks to everyone on the ZBA.
It looks like they're trying to do like a one-size-fits-all with this. And they're not really taking into consideration somebody that just wants a simple variance. You know, they want, you know, like a new, small front porch or something. Almost sounds like you've got to have an engineer. So it's not taking those sorts of things into consideration, it doesn't look like.
Well, and I agree, it was drafted with sort of, we wanted one application instead of having confusing overlap, because a lot of times people come in and they want rezoning and a variance or rezoning and a special use. So there was a goal to have a single application. But the site plan requirements vary depending on which type of zoning request you're making. And it's not their goal to put someone that just has a simple project through any inordinate...
Well, that's what it looks like, though.
Okay.
Is that it's, they're requiring the same documents, are they not?
Well, they are, certainly, they are. I can tell you, though, from experience that...
I don't really see anything on there that would, I mean, even if you're putting up a fence, those wouldn't be that difficult to answer, those questions.
Right. They routinely accept the hand-drawn site plans. So it's not like you need to go to an engineer to generate.
Well, it doesn't really say that they accept those sorts of things. Everything has to be to scale, and that's difficult to do on a hand-drawn...
Probably a judgment call by the zoning board, I guess, when they come to them, whether if it's something simple, then here, draw your porch on the paper. If you want to build a house and this and that.
That's something different.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah, just, I suppose someone's going to have to make that call at the time. Yeah, we don't want people to hire an engineer to build a porch, but we don't want someone building a house with something they sketched on a piece of paper, so...
Okay, anyone else? All right, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Trustee Harn.
Aye.
Trustee Gett.
Aye.
Trustee Dan Mariscal.
Aye.
Trustee Diane Mariscal.
Aye.
Trustee Reichert.
Aye.
Trustee Carter.
Aye.
Okay, that passes. The final piece of business, new business, is ordinance 2018-1575, an ordinance amending Title III, Chapter III of the Village Code of the Village of Peoria Heights, for the purpose of imposing a hotel and motel room renting tax. Trustee Mariscal, I'd ask for a motion to approve this.
Thank you, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance 2018-1575.
And do I have a second?
Second.
All right, Trustee Mariscal?
For our grand finale, I'm going to have Counsel Walton set this up for you guys.
Glad to be of assistance. This one did not come from the zoning board. This is something that we've talked about for the last couple of months. We have no hotel tax ordinance, because we, it would seem that we don't have any properties that it would apply to. We're hoping that a hotel does get developed, but in the interim, there's all kinds, as Mayor, I think, has pointed out recently, there are all kinds of Airbnb-type rentals that people will rent an apartment, rent their house out. Those are all, by law, can be subjected to a hotel tax. The hotel tax is limited to use, to advertise, to try to get people to come, visit Peoria Heights, and spend the night here, stay in hotels, you know, we don't really have any yet, but, so it's really a marketing fund, that's funded by those who rent, whether it's hotel rooms, Airbnb apartments, and so forth. So, this is a proposed ordinance, it's for discussion, if it's something that you think is appropriate, you can adopt it tonight. It's a pretty standard ordinance in the state of Illinois, most communities have it. The new frontier that we're in are the internet rentals. So, in the definition of hotel and motel room, you'll notice that it does cover all of the Airbnb, VRBO-type scenarios. They're out there, they're hard to find, it's hard to police. It's going to take an education campaign, if we adopt it, to let everybody know. You know, certainly, we can check by doing searches on the internet. But anyway, it's here for discussion, and I'm happy to answer any questions. The tax is 5%.
Questions?
And so that would be another tax, like on top of a sales tax?
Correct.
For staying there, or...
Correct. And then, we use that to, again, market for people to come and stay.
So the reason why you have the apartment, that's for like that?
Yep. Now, anything over a month doesn't qualify, that's a rental, that's, that's, you know, any landlord-tenant type relationship, this does not apply to. So we're not trying to tax our landlords. This is the short-term, one, two, three nights, maybe a week, you know, rentals that customarily happen through...
Are they required by law to let us know they're doing that, or you don't have to?
They will be if we adopt the ordinance.
Any other questions?
Yeah, with the brick-and-mortar hotel, it's a totally different scenario, but, I mean, what's the enforcement mechanism for these, the Airbnbs or whatnot, that kind of come up spontaneously?
They do, and it's, I have to admit, there is no easy way to enforce it. I mean, I guess, the best way to do it would be occasionally, you search, you put in Peoria Heights on Airbnb, you're going to know the addresses that, you know, at least advertise, but you have no way of knowing that somebody actually stayed there. So, so, yeah, enforcement with this kind of thing, it's largely on our system.
Is that a reportable income for somebody?
I mean... Yes. Does it get reported? Probably not very often, but yes.
I think that the main purpose of bringing this forward is certainly to be prepared if a bricks-and-mortar hotel locates in the village, so we would be able to use a tax from that to promote tourism in the Village of Peoria Heights. If you're not ready for the Airbnb piece or the other piece, we can certainly carve that out and come back to it. I don't plan on having Chief Sutton out there, searching for small properties.
But we do have a building inspector that will be traveling the village.
That's a good point, too, Trustee Harn.
It's a small village, and people talk, so I don't think it'll be that hard to track down it.
I'd say leave it in there.
Yeah, let's leave it in, what does it hurt?
That's a very good point, Brian, thank you.
Now, one thing to note, I drafted this in such a way that it takes effect with our next fiscal year, so that's a long lead time, obviously, for everybody in the village to, you know, understand, hey, we have this new ordinance, you know, imposing a tax. We could certainly make it effective, you know, whenever you liked, summer 1, January 1, it made sense to me, to have it be starting next fiscal year, to make sure everybody has plenty of time to be educated. But that's, you know, the board's prerogative.
Next fiscal year, sounds good to me.
Okay, are we ready to vote, then?
Yep.
All right, Madam Clerk?
Trustee Harn.
Aye.
Trustee Gett.
Aye.
Trustee Dan Mariscal.
Aye.
Trustee Diane Mariscal.
Aye.
Trustee Reichert.
Aye.
Trustee Carter.
Aye.
All right, that passes. Lastly, is the Treasures Report. Madam Clerk?
Yes. Treasures Report, October 2018, the grand total in the village account was $1,986,112.79. And the grand total in the Waterworks account was $735,776.26.
All right, I'd ask for a motion to approve the Treasures Report.
I'll move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I do. Any questions on the report? Any discussion? Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Trustee Harn.
Aye.
Trustee Gett.
Aye.
Trustee Dan Mariscal.
Aye.
Trustee Diane Mariscal.
Aye.
Trustee Reichert.
Aye.
Trustee Carter.
Aye.
All right, I don't believe there's a need for an executive session, I just want to take this time to wish you all a Happy Thanksgiving, and safe travels, if you're traveling outside of the area, and especially to our employees, thank you for all you do, and have a very happy Thanksgiving. Trustee Gett?
I move to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, we're adjourned.